Would everybody stand and we'll have a moment of silence for the earthquake victims in Japan. Thank you. Yeah, we'll do the pledge of allegiance. Commissioner Borowski.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which its hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless our troops.
Amen.
Mr. Osborne?
Yes, sir.
Make sure we have the pledge on the agenda when we have these meetings, please.
Okay.
Okay. I thank you, everybody, for coming to this special meeting on a public hearing for March 14th, 2011. A few ground rules that we're gonna have to have here. All the people that are speaking tonight will address the chair. We don't want any finger pointing, we don't want any cussing, we don't want any turning around, bad-mouthing somebody behind you. And we want a good meeting and everybody behave like they should. Another thing, each member that or each person that comes up here to speak, we want you to state your last name for the record and spell your last name. So, we'll get started now. Item number one, action, public hearing, discussion, deliberation, and possible decision to determine whether the best interests of the town of Perump are no longer served by the town board form of government pursuit to NRS 269.222. Place an advisory question on the November 2012 general election asking the voters of the town of Perump to determine whether the best interests of the town of Perump are no longer served by the town board form of government pursuit to NRS 269.022. I'm open this public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter? You have three minutes to speak. Commissioner Borowski will have the clock. And please state what town you're from.
My name is John Bostea.
Your mic's not on. Is that better? My last name is B.O.S.T.A. I attended a grumpy old man's meeting on a Friday morning, and a petition was passed around verbally stated that the petition was for a vote for incorporation. There were no documents with the signature paper. I pointed out that I was not a registered voter in the town of Perump. And the people said, "That's okay, because you own property in Perump and you have the right to sign the petition." I questioned the legality of the petition that was circulated because there was no documentation preceding that form that people were signing. My name was approximately in the middle of the first page. Many people in Amagoza Valley asked why I was signing a petition that was related to Perump. Mr. Borowski was at that meeting, Sheriff Tameo was at that meeting, and that petition was passed throughout the meeting for people to sign. It's my understanding of initiative petition, there is supposed to be paperwork with it saying what the petition is about and documentation of information there. None of that was there, it was simply verbal. This is for a vote on incorporation. Now it comes up as a petition to dissolve the town board of Perump, and that is not the reason that that petition was circulated for. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, Jeff Bobek, resident of Perump. It's B.O.B.E.C.K. To compare and contrast, perhaps, I'd like to bring up the issue of impact fees. The, as a way of stating my feelings here. The impact fees were sold to the public on the basis of requiring real estate developers, specifically large planned community developers, to help pay for improvements to infrastructure in the Perump Regional Planning District. Actually, this was not a bad idea. The bad idea was allowing high-density development in Perump in the first place, a place of limited water and infrastructure. After the impact fees were approved, they were then levied against all businesses that wished to start or expand in Perump, not just real estate developers. This has restricted our growth to large corporations that are able to pay the upfront fees. Mom-and-pop businesses have been given a hardship to endure. Many simply cannot afford our impact fees. So, the impact fees are to build infrastructure. Okay, let's explore that a bit.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Are we gonna get to the agenda item?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Because impact fees has nothing to do with dissolving the town board, but go ahead.
If you let me continue. I would like to know how much has been collected up to this point versus how much has been spent for improvements in Perump. Now, I understand that there are restrictions in how this money must be spent. It can only be spent on infrastructure directly related to the new or expanded business, and if the infrastructure is shared by other entities, then the impact fee account may only pay for a portion of those improvements. If that is the case, then the impact fees are the proverbial black hole. Money goes in and then cannot escape while only serving to drain the limited resources of Perump entrepreneurs. We are told that impact fees cannot be rescinded or we will have to pay back all that has been collected up to this point. So, impact fees are now another government service that will never go away. I do not, as an example, I do not want this style of leadership to be expanded any further in the Perump Valley. And for this reason and many others, if the vote in question were held today, whether to dissolve our Perump Town Board, I would choose to keep my Perump Town Board.
Thank you.
Sandra Darby, D.A.R.B.Y. Right now, we have just elected three new town board members by popular vote. And I think that it is a sad thing that we are bringing this up right now, right after they have been elected, to try to dissolve a town board. And when I read the petition, everything that I went through, the reasoning and the problems, were all related to commissioner issues. Businesses that come here into town have to eventually be approved, you know, go through planning and that sort of thing through the county commissioners, not the town board. So, the problems that people are complaining about are almost virtually all county issues, not town board issues. If people knew what the town board was responsible for, they would realize that the town board is not really failing at what they are trying to do. I have to admit that the last town board was very contentious. There were a lot of problems, there were a lot of issues, there was a lot of anger and a lot of problem. But that has virtually ended now, we're trying to work. I think that every one of them would work with every one of you up there now. I know that my husband would, I know that Carolyn Endersby would, and Tom Waters, Harley Culkin. I think we need to give them a chance before we make a decision. But ultimately, a vote by the people, if that's what you want, I think that that's a fair thing to do. But I think a town board form of government that's elected by the people is the right thing, not an appointed town board, because I'm not sure how you do it. I haven't really searched into that. But I think it's a slap into the face of the three that we have just elected. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, if I may, Ms. Darby, you want that on top of this put into the record too?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you.
Isabel Isherwood, I.S.H.E.R.W.O.O.D. I'm a resident of Perump. In November, I went to the polls and I voted for my town board members. I was happy with the results, I am really happy with this new town board. Ni County is huge, it's bigger than some states back east. You have enough on your plate, you don't need us. We should be allowed to continue the way we are. I think that this town board will serve the town much better than the last one, which, as Sandy said, it was rather contentious. And I feel that this is just too soon after the election also to start passing judgment on the town board and to try and get rid of it without it actually been given a chance to accomplish anything. I feel that this town is big enough, it's the largest town in Ni County. We need a certain form of governance, more than just an advisory board and the commissioners who have other things to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carolyn Endersby, E.N.D.E.R.S.B.Y., resident of Perump and newly-elected town board member. When this question came about, I looked at it as in an impartial way as I could. And I started with the recent elections and saw that in the recent elections, as others have mentioned, that there was a large turnout of Perump town citizens electing their newly-formed town board. And then I looked at the petition that was signed and asked staff of Ni County and others why the petition was being entertained and why there was going to be a public hearing on it. Some of the questions I had when I looked at the petition was, again, why is it that eighty-two percent of the entire county population resides in town Perump? But why is it almost dead last within the county when it comes to infrastructure? Well, as we all know, infrastructure is part and parcel of what the county commissioners have responsibilities for. Where and why do other communities have large, beautiful community centers and senior centers? And, again, going into the ambulance question and the other issues that were brought out in the petition, I kept asking myself, "Why was that noted? And why were those issues so prevalent in the decision of the county commissioners to bring this into a public hearing?" So, I took quite a bit of time to research some history on Perump and found, I've only been here seven years myself, but back in 1962, there were citizens living here that desired to have an unincorporated town of Perump formed. And they petitioned the county commissioners for that to happen. And their statement was that the, that all the statutory requirements to the creation of the said unincorporated town of Perump have been met and complied with. And they were asking for the county commissioners' support on that. It wasn't until 1984 that the town of Perump citizens finally got their unincorporated town. And they did that by five registered voters of the unincorporated town of Perump filing with a Ni County clerk a notice of intention to file a petition seeking the adoption of the town board form of government. That happened during the elections of November 1984 as a ballot item.
Time. Your time is up. Can I, I usually don't say very much in a public hearing, but I'm bound to. What infrastructure are we not providing for you?
I have resolutions dating back decades requesting assistance from the county on projects and funding and assistance. It's really quite interesting to look back in the historical data.
You made one thing about community centers. I don't know of any community center, I've been here for forty-three years in this county. I know no senior center that has been built by this county.
Those were questions that were addressed in the petition.
I say community center. All of them were built, Beatty's was built by the town of Beatty. Tonopah built theirs.
Tonopah's was a building from World War II, so they kind of remodeled it.
Well, the questions I had were if that, I didn't say one way or the other. I'm just addressing what was in the petition as questions that they had as to why.
Okay, thank you. Paul, go ahead.
My name's Paul Willis. I'm a founder of-
Spell your last name to the record.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I was not clear with Mrs. Endersby. Were you speaking in favor of the item or against the item? That wasn't clear. You gave a, you tried to give a history, but we never did get to your point. There wasn't adequate time, so you're-
I started out very neutral and went into an adamant that the town of Perump has been here and desiring local governance for over fifty years now. So, I am in favor of it, yes.
You're in favor of abolishing the town board?
No, I am opposed to abolishing it. I'm in favor of having an unincorporated town of Perump.
Thank you. Sorry, Paul.
And just as a historical note, Paul Willis, W.I.L.L.I.S., in 1962, there was also a group just as adamant not wanting to be put into the incorporation because it was such a large incorporation area. But that's not what I'm here for. I'm Paul Willis, I'm a former town board member. I've been involved quite a bit. I'm a founder of the Grumpy Old Man's Club, which is correctly known as the Old Farts Club, you know? I just wanted to clarify that. And the petition that was sent around was under no auspices other than we have been besieged with incorporation time and time again, three times that I've been here. And everybody says, "We want to vote, give everybody a chance to vote." Well, we did that three times, it was defeated three times, so now let's get to vote. If we're going to get a chance to have the people say, let's have the say to disband the town board. It's inefficient, it's ineffective. They aspire for powers they shouldn't have, and they don't handle the powers that they do have. So, I think their time has gone. I've lived in Nevada my whole life. I lived in a township of East Las Vegas, which used to be Whitney, which used to be Duckwater, okay? Or no, Duck Creek, I should say.
I was gonna say Duckwater's kind of way north of here.
No, it's Duck Creek, okay? We had an advisory board that worked just fine, you know? We took our concerns to the commissioners, the commissioners addressed them. We have just such an ineffectual town board that, with all due respect to the people that were just elected, there was an election, we had to hire somebody. But we've had enough of this incorporation. The town board itself chose to put this on their plate. And in their own ordinance, they're defying their own Town Ordinance 46, where there's a lot of wherés, therefore's, but the whereas that any incorporation has to have the vote of the entire valley. And this town board has been going behind the citizens' backs and the taxpayers' backs trying to find a way to keep doing that, getting powers of incorporation, trying to get the camel's nose under the tent. You know, enough's enough. I think these last elections have been said, "Enough's enough." The government, enough's enough. You want, the biggest entitlement program in this country, I'm sorry, is the government and government employees. They think they're entitled to their jobs and entitled to the comfort of their little sphere and at the expense of us taxpayers' backs, and enough's enough. So, like I said, I'm adamantly in favor of getting a red, get rid of another layer of ineffectual oppressive government. Thank you.
Dave Stevens, is that too loud?
No, you're fine.
You're doing fine. First of all, I'd like to thank this county board for their gracious hospitality for letting us use this building. You're welcome. I think that's real good. Before I get, my memory's not too good, but I would like to say I'm in favor of keeping the town board. I have no friends in there, believe me. I go to all the meetings and they all, none of them like me. But why I've changed my mind on this, I was wanting, I never signed that thing. But I've been wanting to get rid of this town board for a long time, but yet I come to find out that we got, they got the greatest people in the world working for this town, in the fire department. And if they go over to the county, if they disabolish the town board, we'll lose our fire department, God help us if we ever done that. And the people who work for the town, they're great people, good people. And I would go to bat for any one of them. That's what I mean. As far as that town board, I don't get carried away here, but I'll have them all straightened out here in about six months. I thank you very much.
Thank you.
I didn't tell you my name.
Dave, was that a threat or a promise?
That's a promise, and I'm one hundred percent against incorporation.
Do you want to spell your last name for the record?
One hundred percent against incorporation?
S.T.E.V.E.N.S.
Against incorporation. Against incorporation.
Okay.
Oh, I'm one hundred percent against that, I don't ever want to say that.
Well, it's not incorporation tonight, it's about dissolving the town board.
I know, but some of them are spouting off.
I know, everybody wants to bring up incorporation.
I don't want to pay no money.
Okay, thanks.
All right.
Thank you, very nice, nice people, all you.
My name's Louis J. DeCaniot, it's D.E. capital C.A.N.I.O. I'm a Perump resident for approximately eight years. Now, the town board was elected by the people of Perump to be the voice of Perump. The Perump Town Board and the Perump Chamber of Commerce seem to be the only groups trying to keep business here in Perump. We have to keep things local, especially jobs, if Perump is going to survive in the future. Many cities require local residency for people who aren't paid with the tax dollar. At the present time, we have a law firm from Las Vegas and a law firm from Reno, Nevada, paid with our tax dollars. Consultant fees are also paid to companies outside of Perump and Ni County. Out-of-town construction companies and many other companies are draining our tax dollars. Homestead Road and all this stuff associated with that is a perfect example of that. Now, the Perump Town Board is the voice of the residents of Perump, and if disbanded in any way, the town of Perump will probably just slowly wither away. I'm for keeping the town board and give them more authority to make decisions for the betterment of our community. From what I see, there's too many chefs in the kitchen. When something has to be done, there's this committee, that committee, this committee, that committee. Streamline it a little bit, get things done. I was a business owner myself, if I had to do all that, I'd be sleeping in the park today. You gotta make a decision and go with it. You can't keep going to another entity all the time. And for some strange reason, I live over by Black Road that's been torn up, there ain't nothing being done there. If I was the king of Perump and I made all the decisions, that thing would've been up and running a long time ago. We got too many layers here. Without the town board, the town of Perump is screwed. I'm for keeping the town board. Thank you.
My name's Bill Garlo, G.A.R.L.O.U.G.H., citizen of Perump. I know that there was a committee who signed a petition who wished to abolish the town board. Well, the town board's been here ever since I lived here. I've been here over fourteen years and I've owned property here for over twenty years. Just because somebody was elected that you didn't care for, I see no reason for an abolishment of it. I understand that this petition was signed before the first month was even done. Sixty percent of the town board was elected in November and didn't take over until January. I might be wrong, but I think we started this petition before February hit. Now, I know, actually, there's a new county commissioner up there. After less than thirty days, if you said you wanted to get rid of that county commissioner, how do you think that person would feel? You run for office, you get elected, and now you talk about abolishing it. You put it on the ballot, you put it on the ballot and let the people of Perump. When you talk about thirty-nine people signing a petition, well, I would say you would need thirty-nine hundred to sign that petition, because if you only need thirty-nine, I could go out all week and get petitions signed every day with thirty-nine people. And I'm sure it wouldn't be brought up here either to enforce it or not. So, you put it on the ballot, let the people vote for it. I believe that they will vote in favor of keeping the town board at least by sixty percent, sixty to forty. So, what puzzles me is, is if we put this on the ballot in 2012, are we gonna have a special election or not? Because in 2012, you've got two other town board members who are gonna come up for election. Should somebody sign up, spend their hundred dollars, go out and get signs and campaign and spend their money to be on the same ballot that may abolish the position? So, I would say, if you want this to pass, it should be a special election. And that way, a person will know come May in 2012 if they're actually gonna sign up to run for a town board member. And that, I believe, would be a problem at the time. Thank you very much, y'all have a great night.
Mr. Chairman? Just as an aside, there are people already calling to recall me, so it does happen.
But they can't do it until after six months.
They got six months and this would be two years from now, so.
Don Cox, C.O.X., and it's not us, Dan. I was kind of up in the air how I wanted this to go tonight. But I've always believed in self-rule, and I still believe in that. So, I'm gonna have to say I want to keep this town board as it is. There's some things being done in the past I didn't like, and there's things being done now that I don't like. But home rule is the way you go. You don't sit up there and say, "Well, we're gonna get rid of the town board." Something just don't sound kosher to me about this whole thing. We got petitions, twelve hundred signatures, it did no good at all. You get thirty-nine, we got an open house here. Thirty-nine don't mean nothing. And I'm not talking about what we got on Butch, we're talking about another petition. I'm for home, I'm for home rule, I'm for the town board to stay as it is, give these new town board members a chance. And I think you're gonna see a big difference. There's some things being done I don't approve of either. But don't get rid of home rule, it's not the thing to do. Thank you.
My name is Bill Carrans, C.A.R.N.S., I live in Perump. Thank you, Commissioner Hollis and Commissioners, Ni County. I attend, I believe I'm the youngest part of the Old Farts Group, and I attend that meeting fairly regularly. I am for changing the town board from a board member position back to an advisory committee, what it used to be. If you look at the history in the largest county of the state, Clark County, where they used to have some nine or ten different townships, all of which had town boards, and it got to be really counterproductive with all the excess layers of government in Clark County, to a point where they finally, in the 1980s, if memory serves correct, they abolished the town boards but left advisory committees. They're still voted in, similar to what Perump would be if it was relegated back to an advisory committee, where the homegrown people in Perump would actually be able to meet with that town advisory committee as they do now in the position of town board members. Give them information, those folks are able to then bring the information here to the county commission so you know what's going on. For everyone else in the audience, realize we have at least three commissioners here that live here in Perump, so we do have a lot of homegrown interest in what happens, not just at the county level, but as well right here in Perump. And I believe all of you have at least a small portion of your area in Perump as well. So, Perump is already, really, it's represented right here with the board. It's a matter of eliminating an extra layer of localized government if we relegate the town board back to an advisory committee. There's a lot of tax dollars that have risen because of the existence- There's a lot of tax dollars that have risen because of the existence of the town board since 1984. Those taxes would essentially be abolished. We would lose a certain percentage of the employees of the town of Perump, but be that as it may, it's a cost savings for everyone involved. County emergency services would, I would, I'm sure would envelop the town of Perump, fire department, and emergency services as such, hence saving quite a bit of money. Which, as we look at things now, there are so many layers. It is an incredibly thick onion. It's a multi-layered cake, like what we used to see at The Nugget. Just all of those layers are more and more paperwork, more and more people, more and more trouble, more and more cost to everybody in this room when it comes to tax dollars. And relegating the town board to an advisory panel to be able to report to you, the commissioners, seems to be the economical way to go, as well as a more streamlined way about it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I address Mr. Carrans? Mr. Carrans, you said that if the town board were abolished and replaced with the town advisory board form of government, the members of which we would appoint, that it would reduce your tax burden. Tell me where you got that information and specifically what taxes would, that you're paying now would be eliminated.
Well, let's talk specifically dollars, if we can, Commissioner. The town of Perump is mandated by county code to have a volunteer fire department. As it stands right now, it costs several million dollars a year to run that fire department. If the county commission took the fire department back over, if it went back to county and it went back to a volunteer system, which I'm sure would be something very similar to the Churchill Fallon Volunteer Fire Department, one of only two ISO-1 rated departments in the entire country, we could follow that role. Right there, we'd be saving millions of dollars that are otherwise being paid to this department in tax money that we're heading to pay for.
No, Bill, you wouldn't be saving any money. The, the funds to support your paid fire department come directly from your property taxes. It comes from your 101, your general, your general fund.
Yes, they do.
That's right. So it wouldn't reduce your tax burden at all. You'd still be paying the same amount under an advisory board that you're paying now under an elected town board. You'd still be paying the same thing.
Who sets the, those tax rates on the property taxes, Commissioner?
The town of Perump.
That's right. And when the town of Perump goes away, then the county commission has that control. Hence, if you don't need that extra money, you would either take those tax dollars and reinvest those into some sort of infrastructure or reduce those taxes.
So in a community that is in desperate need of infrastructure, as I've heard said so many times, and I don't disagree with that, if your tax burden were reduced, where would the money come from to, to improve your infrastructure or increase your infrastructure?
I think we're, we're talking apples and oranges.
No, we're not. We're talking tax dollars.
I think you and I are not exactly seeing eye to eye, which is what I'm going to address, Commissioner. Either the tax dollars would be reduced because we wouldn't have to pay so much in the property taxes because we have less tax burden due to the town board no longer being around, or that money could be diverted to things such as making Homestead a three-lane road or improving the roads on Mans Road, something along that line. We could, we would either be making up for the taxes in areas where we need to spend money, we otherwise don't have the money, or we wouldn't be paying the taxes and still wouldn't have that infrastructure.
Now, now we are talking apples and oranges, because general fund money is not spent to improve or create roads. That comes from gas tax. So that's okay. He, I've just, just through this brief conversation, answered my own question. So, Mr. Chairman, thank you. And Mr. Carrans, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Frank Wilson, W.I.L.S.O.N. I've been here in Perump for, you know, close to 20 years, and I haven't seen the town board has done much of anything, so I'm in favor of getting rid of them. For one thing, there's $75,000 given to fix the roof on that rude center. Evidently, nothing was done. The roof collapsed or whatever, and now they want a new building. Why wasn't that money used? These people are not doing what they're supposed to do, so let's get rid of them and let the county take care of it. They're the ones that give the money to them to start with. So why should we have a town board that goes, is between us and the county commissioners? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Bob Irving, I.R.V.I.N.G. I'm here to speak on the one thing is that, you know, we had a meeting here a couple weeks ago with the sheriff and with the district attorney, and my one feeling is, is this, is that here in the last few months and including last year on the old town board that we had, things were being brought up before the town board that evidently nobody in the town board knew about. I figure that, I feel that what the county needs to do is to take and get rid of our extra cost of our lawyer that we're paying every year and that the, and that the county, district attorney's office furnishes our legal advice, because they know more what's going on in this county than somebody from Reno or Las Vegas. And they can be basically, which they have been done a couple of times, the attorneys have been given false information and made, made letters out that were false and can cause a lot of problems with the town in the end. I really feel that, that we need to have more involvement with the, the county and the town if, on things like this and like the thing that happened with the $75,000. I really, I, I don't know how many people that were in the town board right now even knew that money even existed. And I think that there has to be a way that we can go and set up to when the new town board members come in, that they know what's, what they've got and where it's at and what they can and can't do. And the only way that they're going to do it is by having somebody that's out here in this community who are part of the community, tell them, a lawyer preferably, that will say yea or nay on it, as opposed to having some person that's coming from a big city trying to tell them what they can do and what they can't do and really don't have any idea. I've sat here many, many commissioner, town board meeting nights and listened to the town lawyer that we have. Basically, he doesn't know what's going on. He really, really don't. He's, he's being led down the road by individuals, and a lot of the stuff that's being said is not correct, and it's getting the town and making them look like a bunch of fools and also making the, the county board look like, the county commissioners look like a bunch of fools by the way they do. So I think that we need more, more legal advice in it. The town board that we have right now, my own personal feeling after being here for, for eight years now and been to practically every town board meeting involved, I think that right now we have one of the better town boards that I've seen. I really do. I think they are out there, at least they don't sit there and look at you like a bunch of dummies and won't ask you any questions. This town board that we have now is more interested in what we're saying and what we have for an idea, as opposed to the past town boards, we've had to sit there and looked at you like, like you were stupid and did not care anything about it. No, I think the town board we have is, is sufficient to do the job that they're supposed to be doing. I thank you.
So, Mr. Irving?
Yes.
You are in favor of abolishing the town board or not?
No, I'm in favor of keeping the town board.
Of keeping it? Okay, thank you.
My name is Bob Little, L.I.T.T.L.E., and I was one of the ones who signed the original petition, and I still think it's a good idea simply because of the area that this town encompasses. If you were to take the total landmass of Las Vegas, North Las Vegas, and Henderson and drop it into Perump, you would have room left over. And they have unincorporated towns left over in Las Vegas who, in the Las Vegas Valley, whose population exceeds that of Perump. Basically, my reason for supporting the idea of doing away with the town board is to allow the landmass through the county commissioners to be subdivided into townships that might better affect the people who live in those newly created advisory board districts. There's a constant effort by some people, a very small minority, to incorporate this town. Most of those people live in the HOA areas, if you will, and I understand why. They like having someone control their lives. There's also a lot of agricultural-style people out here who don't want interference from everybody else around them. So if you were to take this valley, which is one huge 340-square-mile area, and break it up into three or four individual townships with advisory boards, then the people in each one of those areas would have the option to incorporate, because they could gather together a petition within their newly created township, and they could incorporate, because they would have the majority of the votes. They could have, for instance, Mountain Falls, Artesia, Cotton Woods, and, and all those little subdivisions the county has created in the last 10 years, they could have their little city. But a lot of the people here don't want it. And the, and the key with this is the town itself is going to be running out of money. They are spending more than they have. Right now, the books look good, but just like the sales tax revenue that showed up out around Mountain that one month in November that distorted the sales tax revenue for most of the year, I mean, the, the company, the mine needed to buy equipment, right?
Probably bought a haul truck and blew everybody else out of the water.
They bought a, they bought a bunch of stuff, did they not? And all of a sudden, the sales tax revenue for that part of the county looked great for one month. Since then, how are we doing? According to the Department of Taxation, not good. So that is my only reason. Right now, the town of Perump is, they have too big an area to try to govern.
30 seconds.
And it's extended so far that my whole thing is that if this does get on the ballot and it does pass, your job then will be to figure out how best to subdivide this area into working, manageable opportunities.
Mr. Chairman, may I address Mr. Little? So Bob, if I understand you correctly, you are not only in favor of abolishing the town board form of government here, but you would actually break it up into maybe four, the, the unincorporated, incorporated area of Perump, breaking it up into four or five separate communities with separate town boards?
Kind of along the demographics of what we have, yes.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Dave?
Yeah, Frank Carbone, C.A.R.B.O.N.E., and I'm a member of the Perump Town. Thank you for having us all in here. I just have a few things to say. It's really simple. I know when we voted on the, June, we had over 20,000 people voted for the board, and in the general election, we had over 30,000 people voted for the board. So that's pretty much the whole town. I think we want to keep the town board. We want to keep it the way it is. I think the guys and the girls that are on it today are doing their job. They're trying to learn. They're trying to get a hold of things, and there's no other way than stepping in and learning what you've got to do. And the people behind us are for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, board members, my name is Lamont Morris, M.O.R.R.I.S. I'm not a resident of Perump. I am not a resident of Nye County. I am a frequent visitor, and I am looking to move out here. So I don't have a dog in this fight, but I can sit back being an outsider, if you will, and have some observations. And just from my being in this building tonight, I'm not sure if this fight is about power or about money. And it really doesn't matter, because it all boils down to the same thing. And you can save money if you combine services. Joining services together, county, town, you can save a lot of money. The jurisdiction where I came from is in bankruptcy right now.
Where are you from?
Vallejo, California.
Ooh. One of many.
One of many. That town is, has cut services in half, cut wages down 25, 30%, and a lot of the stuff that I see here, Nye County and Perump, went on there. So if you want to see how to save money, don't just have a myopic view and look just here. Look elsewhere. There's a lot of other people that have been in the same problem. Volunteers are wonderful. Are they the cure-all? No. They can help you out a lot. Combining services where there's redundancy, put it together. I have seen some egos that seem to be a little bit inflamed, and this is my turf, you can't come across it. That, and to me, and, and I've been a public servant for over 30 years, you know, egos have no business being here. If your ego is too big, you need to go home. I appreciate the job you're doing. I think it's wonderful that you're giving, or considering giving the citizens a chance to vote. That's one of the great things about America. Everybody has a chance to speak and have their voices heard. Good luck. I wish you the best and look forward to seeing you again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris.
Commissioner Hollis, thanks for taking the time. All of you for listening.
Hon, I think your mic is off.
I think my mic is on now. Thank you. Commissioner Hollis, again, thank you. Commissioners, thanks for coming out, everybody for coming out and listening to what we got to say.
What's your name?
Don Charleboix, C.H.A.R.L.E.B.O.I.X., owner of Perump Hunting Company and formerly of Southside Nursery. I just want, you know, I, I'm, I'm in favor of, of the way that Bill Carrans talked about it. Let's break it up into several discs, and Bob also mentioned the same thing. Let's break it up into advisory boards, because on my five acres, I have almost nothing in common with, with, over Mr. Hafens' enterprise, all his homes over there. I've got three pigs, I've got three goats, I've got horses, I've got two greenhouses, I've got tons of beehives, and none of those people want any of that in their backyard. When I moved out here in 1996, I left Las Vegas after 28 years of police work. I'll go back to that in a minute, but we don't have anything in common, but we do, are we a very rural area? So I'm in favor of doing away with the town board, have advisory boards, and have the rural section be able to present to you the things we want. The parks, we need a big park someplace. We've got to put on our annual fair. We want a place to do that. Back in, back in the 60s and 70s, when I was on the sheriff's department, we had to go out to East Las Vegas. And you talk about contentious. I mean, those, those people out there fought for their dear lives out in Whitney, like this gentleman spoke about a minute ago. They, they wanted their town board and they wanted it big and strong. Well, so did the Strip, and so did North Vegas, and so did everybody else. But they did away with it. Now they got advisory boards that advise to the commission, and everybody seems to get along pretty good down there now. And that's what I think we should be. The town, we've got to do away with some levels of government. Pet money's coming to an end. Whether we like it or not, and I'm, I don't want to get into Yucca Mountain. We got...
Please, let us get on our soapboxes.
Yeah, I don't want to do that, no. Let's, the pet money comes to an end. Where are we going to get the funds? The government's funds are cut off, and we've been depending on those funds coming into the county to support the town. Well, it's not here anymore. So I'm, and the fire department, I spent five years on the Las Vegas Fire Department back in 1959, 61, 2. We had volunteers back then, lots of them, but we only had 28,000 people in, in Las Vegas at that time. And we have more people now, 36,000 supposedly in Perump. We had 28,000 then, and we did fine with volunteers. Sheriff's Office also had lots of volunteers, ride-alongs, lots of, lots of programs it can get into.
Time.
Time is up. I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, my name is Larry Sanford. I'm a 19-year resident of Perump. Came here originally from Southern California. We just voted in a new town board. I think people are jumping at problems that aren't there, that they haven't given the town board a chance yet. They've only been there for, what, a couple of months now? And they were talking about breaking it up into multiple townships. Well, instead of paying one town manager a bunch of money, then we'd be paying four or five or a half a dozen town managers' money if they had different townships with managers. So I think that is a, a very costly, bad idea to do that. I say stick it, you know, stick with it the way it is now. Give the town board a chance to do what they were elected to do, and with this new board, I think some of that might happen. The previous town board ignored the people's wishes. The head of the town board stood up and said to me, "I don't work for the people." And this was right there in the town meeting. There was, everybody that was there at the meeting was witness to that, and she was one of the main problems of the town board. Now that she's no longer there, maybe the town board will be able to accomplish something. So that's my feelings on it, and like I say, I'm a, I'm a small business owner and 19-year resident, and that's my feelings.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah?
If I could just clarify that, if you did abolish the town board, the current town
town board, you would get rid of the town manager, comp role, you would save some of that. And the advisory boards that the other gentleman are talking about, you wouldn't have a town manager for each one of those boards. Beatty doesn't have one, Amargosa doesn't have one, you'd have...
Well, that's only because they choose not to have one.
Well, they choose not to have one, yeah.
Yeah. It doesn't automatically mean that you would eliminate the position of town manager. If the advisory board advised the Board of County Commissioners that it is in, in the best interests of the people to have a town manager, and they're willing to set aside a portion of their budget to pay that salary, we would certainly listen to that.
It also doesn't mean they would automatically have one, though?
No, of course not.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Darby. My name is Mike Darby, D-A-R-B-Y. I am currently the Chair of the Town Board. Uh, you talk about not representing the people. Uh, I believe that as town board members, we try to make ourselves available to everybody that we represent. We live in this community, we walk around in this community, we shop here, we spend our leisure time here, we make certain that our phones are on and that we answer them, we respond to emails. I think, um, actually, a lot of the problems is, uh, lack of representation on the next level up. I believe that the issue had to deal with the, uh, with the prison, that the people spoke out against it or against the location. Uh, the RPC spoke out against the location, but yet the people's wishes or voices were gone against by the commissioners. So I believe the lack of representation is on your, your shoe, not ours. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I, I want to address that remark, because, if I may, Mr. Darby, I sat through every single one of those public hearings that was held by the CCA people. We had many, many residents of the town of Perump, including representatives of the town board and the Chamber of Commerce, approach this board and testify on the public record that they supported that project. It wasn't until after this board, um, uh, approved that project, well, a majority of the board approved the project, that people started coming forward and saying that they did not support the detention facility. But I distinctly remember, as I'm sure that Commissioner, as does Commissioner Hollis and Commissioner Boraski, that there were representatives of the Perump Town Board and the Chamber of Commerce and other civic organizations in this community who testified on the record as to their strong support for that project. I just want to make that clear.
And Commissioner Easely, I'd like to add that the Tump, Perump Town Board brought it to us. We didn't bring it to them. They're the ones that initiated, um, negotiations with five different companies and dumped it in our lap, so, Mike, you're part right and part wrong.
Well, you know, I really don't have a problem with CCA, I have a problem with the location.
Yeah, and I, and I understand, and everybody else does too. And by the way, you're doing a great job, and I think as chairman, you've really grown in a short period of time. Keep up the good work, and your wife said you wanted to work with me, so call me sometime, and we'll sit down and talk.
Okay.
Thank you.
My name's Andy Alberti, and, uh, A-L-B-E-R-T-I. Uh, unaccustomed as I am to public speaking, I'm gonna do my best tonight. Uh, before I make my formal comment, and I have provided a written document to all of the commissioners and to Rick Osborne about what I have to say tonight, but I want to say something about why people have moved here in the past. And there was a man that lived here named Oscar Demossi. He did the town board's website after a company called Rapiddyne. Oscar was an Italian immigrant who came here from Italy, and he came to the United States after watching westerns when he lived in Italy. And he thought when he moved to the United States, to New York, that's what he was gonna see, what he used to see on TV, and it wasn't. Oscar had work that took him throughout the country. On one trip to Las Vegas to, to do the work that he did, he went out to Perump. And as Oscar explained it to me, when he came to Perump and he saw what it was like, he felt Perump was like the last free American town. The freedoms that existed here, the ability to live your life without all the restrictions, that's what he saw. Quite frankly, a lot of people don't have the ability when they first moved here to express it that way. That's how I saw it when I moved here. And when I tell people that, there are a lot of others who came here for that lifestyle. So with that, uh, I'd like to just read my statement so that everyone can hear it, and then, uh, probably I'm done. Uh, "As a citizen of Perump since two thousand and one, it has been very disturbing to observe the difficulty in governing the town when there is very little control Perump exerts over the development within its borders. There have been issues of budgeting, union power controlling the town's destiny, all roads in Perump being managed by the county, with the exception of state highways one sixty and three seventy-two, and an obvious lack of understanding by the public of the workings and relationships between town and county government here. I can't tell you how often I hear from people, as a real estate broker, that, 'Why doesn't the town fix the roads? Why doesn't the town do this?'" And they can't. People moved here to Perump thinking this was like city government, similar to their previous life, a rude awakening to them, to say the least. It would seem to the outside observer that the town needs to bring jobs to Perump, yet finds itself without the controls needed to shepherd new companies to locate within its borders. Many find difficulty in wrapping the concept of bringing jobs here with the question of how this happens. A decision by the county to dissolve the town's current form of government to one where the board becomes advisory in nature would make things clearer as to how our government works. Decisions affecting Perump would come from the county. There would also be cost savings to Perump and to Nye County by consolidating services within county operations. Of course, you already know these things. A decision made years ago by others needs to be fixed by making Perump an advisory board, as are all other towns in Nye County. Finally, a petition to incorporate in Nevada...
I'm sorry, Mr. Alberti, I just want to stop you right there. Please excuse me for interrupting you, but Tonopah has an elected town board form of government, and so does Round Mountain. Uh, the, the three are Perump, Tonopah, and Round Mountain. Beyond those three...
You're, you're correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, give them some additional time.
Finally, a petition to incorporate in Nevada under NRS two sixty-six point oh-one-seven requires several things, and the only one I'm gonna fo- focus on is that in a county whose population is a hundred thousand or more, and have an average population density, which is, and it goes on to explain the density of the areas, it would seem to me that we don't meet that hundred thousand dollar requirement in Nye County. Uh, there is more, but the population figure holds particular interest when Nye County is in the forty thousand plus, uh, population category. If the state recognizes size and is an important requirement for incorporation, and that is not a practical method for a better Perump, then I favor dissolving the current form of town government and support county oversight of our affairs. The county has the resources and strength to ensure a well-run, well-managed town for the foreseeable future. And I wanted to add one thing to this. County Code Twenty called for the town of Perump to have a volunteer fire department. The county has never changed that. It still exists.
Do you know why that is?
And I, I was gonna ask, and I could never understand...
Because it's a town of Perump ordinance, it's not a Nye County ordinance.
If the...
On the town board form of government, they have, they have the, uh, power, somebody's fries are up, I can hear that beeping.
It's time. I added another minute besides.
Um, under an elected town board form of government, they have the power to adopt ordinances, and that is an ordinance that the town of Perump adopted. And if the town of Perump feels that it's no longer, or believes that it's no longer necessary to have that ordinance, then they should, uh, then they should draft and introduce a bill to repeal that ordinance. Is that not correct, Mr. Coonsey? Yeah, you.
It's town ordinance, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that, Mr. Coonsey.
I, it would seem to me, though, that if the county creates the town, and the county creates a code that says that they will have a volunteer fire department, that wouldn't the, wouldn't something have to be changed so you could have some consistency in what you have?
Well, the town's were, the town board form of government was created, um, not through an act of the legislature, but, but certainly through a law...
But from the county.
But through a law that was enacted by the state legislature. I wouldn't say necessarily that the county created the town of Perump, um, the, the unincorporated town of Perump. I think the citizens brought forth, I don't, I wasn't in office then, Andy, I'm sorry, but an, an initiative petition at least, or s- the citizens themselves wanted to be recognized as an, uh, as a town board form of government. We did not create them, they created themselves under the, under the laws of the state of Nevada. And under the laws of the state of Nevada, they have the power to enact ordinances, adopt ordinances, just as do we. Under an advisory board form of government, they have the power to recommend to the Board of County Commissioners that ordinances be adopted on their behalf, but they don't have the power to adopt those ordinances. So if ordinance number twenty, that called for the formation of a, a volunteer fire department, is no longer appropriate or necessary, you might want to talk to one of your town board members and see if they will introduce a bill to repeal that ordinance.
Actually, I read the NRS's, and I'd be happy to have a conversation with Mr. Coonsey to, uh, to discuss those issues.
That, Mr. Coonsey? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
And with that, I want to thank you for letting me speak.
It's always a pleasure, thank you.
Sir?
Anthony Greco, resident of Perump for thirteen years. I am a union member. I don't think, uh, I'm, I belong to that, uh, breakfast club also, and I don't think they have a problem with the town board as much as they do with the town manager and the fire department. Okay? I am a union member, I said that for a reason. We have a gangster union in our fire department here. Okay? They have a boys' club where they make sure everybody's getting enough overtime before they retire, so they could get a bigger retirement. I've been at town board meetings where somebody, uh, in the fire department was getting an award and bragging that they were on a triple. Okay? I think, uh...
What does that mean? What does that mean?
That they're getting triple pay, or they, it's more than double time?
Okay.
Okay. Uh, I think that's a problem, when you have people in the fire department that are making, uh, triple or four or five times of the average person in the town. We have a town manager that makes more money than four of the commissioners that are sitting here. I think that's ridiculous. I don't have a problem with the town board because you could talk to them and vote them out if you don't like them, but you can't get rid of the union. And we don't need to be spending millions of dollars a year when eighty percent of the United States is under volunteer fire departments. Perump is too small for this. And I don't want my real estate tax going for that. Let it go for something else, or reduce it. But this is my problem. I have a problem with the town manager and the fire department union. We don't need a union in a town like this, and we don't need a paid fire department. If you want to have some staff paid and the rest volunteer, there's nothing wrong with that. Volunteer firefighters are just as well-trained as paid firefighters. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna, hold on just a minute, we're gonna take a five-minute break, Commissioner Boraski, uh, after break. We'll be back in five, ten minutes.
Can we clarify his last statement? The...
As an overview, and one of the first ones is that while there's been complaints about whose fault it is, county or town, over this and that and such, it's, uh, probably a good idea to consider that if there was a little more communication between the town board and the county commissioners, we would have a great step forward. And I don't know i- if there's any blame to be placed by that, but the fact is, it isn't happening, and that should happen, and it would be a great advantage for both different entities to have the other side's opinion in a lot of cases. And there's things like, someone brought up, uh, the, the seventy-five thousand dollars for fixing the roof. Well, without throwing any rocks, I think that it would be easy to say that if there was this kind of communication, someone would have said something about the seventy-five thousand and the roof, and it would have probably been taken care of. But if it just goes down the road and nothing happens, that's why the roof falls in. And, uh, things like...
Literally and figuratively.
Yes, exactly, I was...
Mr. Chairman, let me interrupt this for a minute, because I clearly heard one town board member say that there just wasn't enough money to do what they wanted to.
I heard that too, and that...
And I don't, and I didn't have any town board members come to me and ask me to help them get more money, so...
No, I understand that.
Okay.
And the fact is, that you, you have an investment in a roof that never happened, what about the one point one million dollars for the water for the fairground? Where's the money? Where's the water? No rights assigned to the fairground. You know, there's a lot of things, it's not a single issue or a single item, it's a lot of them. And the, the cooperation or the communication between the two entities might solve some of these problems, and the movement forward where those funds were exerted in the correct fashion would be the infrastructure things that people are complaining about and so on. So, that's, that's probably one minor solution to our problem. The, the other thing is, I would like to see the item put on the ballot. It costs money, I know, and it will cause a lot of anxiety with different people, but hopefully, just hopefully, that maybe all the way down from our town board to the people that intend to vote, they'll consider what the town board's, uh, actual mission is, what they're supposed to do, what their responsibilities and so on, because people don't know. Um, I don't like to say this, but I've heard people up here tonight that really are not aware of what's going on. They're making comments about, "It, it would be a shame to get rid of the town board" because they were just elected. Who cares if it's an improvement? That's too bad, they're just elected. The, the, the people that are, that are elected, again, this, I, I, I'm gonna put a target on my back here, uh, I'd like to see a town board that understood Robert's Rules of Orders. It just absolutely kills me to go to a meeting and see it go all over the place. People speak out of turn, they do whatever they want, the town manager busts in on anybody, including a, a public commentator. You know, they, they need to go to school and learn the proper way to hold a meeting. And I have to say that I've attended a lot of commissioners' meetings, you don't seem to have that problem.
What's the difference?
We're all afraid of Gary.
Well, Gary, Gary's a pussycat, come on.
Which calls.
But any case, I, I, I would like to see it on the ballot, I, because I think that it would be, um, it would engender some po- uh, some responsibility on our town board members, maybe, and maybe they'd pay attention to what's going on, maybe the people that are, that are voting would consider the issue, and maybe they would be more responsible as voters, maybe that, hopefully, the town board would be responsible to those voters. And, uh, I believe that everyone would have voted to keep the town board, I, I think that would be the case.
So Phil, so Phil, you, you're, you're neutral on the issue itself?
I'm, I'm very, I have to be very neutral, because, uh, I, I don't want to throw the people out. Thank you.
Okay.
I was asking him a question, it's my fault. Yeah, so that's another.
Good evening. My name is Carol Byrd, B-Y-R-D. I'm a volunteer ham radio operator and the Public Information Officer for my Aries Racies group. I hadn't planned on speaking tonight, but when you opened the meeting with a sil- a moment of silence for the Japanese, it really touched on something that I've been concerned with. I'm a resident of Perump for six years, and working with, uh, the Aries Racies group, I understand that we still don't have a memo of understanding between the town and the county. And it, if we ever had an emergency, an earthquake like Japan is going through right now, I'm very concerned about what would happen to the citizens here not having, um, proper infrastructure in place. It, it kinda comes to mind, if we could abolish the town board to get a little bit further down on that process, we've been working on that, what, for four years? And we still don't have a, a memo of understanding? Is it wordsmithing? Is it egos? What is it? You know, just something I wanted to bring up to mind since you guys opened the door about the Japanese, I thought that was really great to open the meeting that way, and I really, uh, I'm very concerned as a citizen on how we would handle such a disaster.
So you're for or against abolishing?
I'm for getting rid of, rid of the town, if it gets us a little bit closer, uh, to getting some, um, practicalities back in our life, uh, getting rid of maybe another layer of, uh, government.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Yeah, I'm Bob Hartman, H-A-R-T-M-A-N. I'm a resident of Perump. State right off the front, I am not in favor of getting rid of the town board. I don't think that this county commission has the time to sit and listen to five, six hours of people every, at least twice a week, or twice a month rather than, uh, like they do down there. The town board is, uh, listening to everybody. I think one of the things that's happening here, and I, and I'm not sure why that's happening, seeming like we've got just small groups of people trying to put a divider, and even a higher divider, wall between the town board and the county commission. And I think this petition is part of that. Uh, I'm very disappointed, at least I was, that you even took it this far. Uh, I think it needs to be stopped and stopped now. I don't think there's any reason to go ahead and put this on a ballot for any... I don't think there's any reason to go ahead and put this on a ballot for anybody's sake. The town has elected their officers. Leave them alone. Let them do their job. And I would like to see you people and the town board work a lot closer together and get rid of these walls that seem to be building between you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Will Rogers, R-O-G-E-R-S. And that guy that was named after me once said, "All I know is what I read in the newspaper." Well...
Will, did you ever meet a man you didn't like?
I said woman and I was misquoted. What I want to say is I just heard tonight that thirty-nine people signed a petition. Thirty-nine people out of forty-plus thousand?
I know.
And so we're having this meeting because of this? Because why? I am for keeping the town board. I think that this is a sham that these thirty-nine people, somebody must have had a lot of juice to get this promoted this far. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, it should be noted that it was passed around at one breakfast meeting. It wasn't sent around for a week or a month. It was, it was one breakfast meeting. And I've since had twenty people ask me where to sign it. And I've had nobody ask me not to move forward with the vote.
Okay. Go ahead.
First name's Dan, last name's LeVar. I gotta let you write, let you know right up front that I am from Crystal, so I will not address town board issues. Okay? We got that out of the way. So I, I kind of got caught up in that the last time I was here. But I do have to mention, having to do with planning and zoning, that I'm totally against our county commissioners giving up planning and zoning to this town board. I just don't support it. After watching a teleconference down on Las Vegas Boulevard in Washington and watching the, watching the display of this town board up in Carson City, I think it's a big joke. It really is. And we need people like yourselves who act very professional in nature to take care of us, you know? Having to do with also planning and zoning, it was not long ago, at a couple of meetings that I went to, that for a few months, that people were raising cane about the county commission, how they were dealing with planning and zoning. Then as some time went by, I noticed that the commissioners were very favorable in rearranging that planning department a little bit. I mean, some heads rolled over that, I believe. So meantime, I see that there's been a lot of accusations having to do with the county commissioners not being too favorable to businesses coming in. And I think that I did a couple of columns, thank God the papers printed those columns. And I think it had to do with, if you have businesses in the corridor, you know, waiting to come into the county, you need to let us know who they are. Well, the town said, "Well, they don't wish to have their names divorced." So then, so then Gary Hollis, right here, I'm putting him on the spot right now. He's, he's not looking at me when I say this, so. So I'm saying that Gary Hollis said, "Look, if we're having a problem," the commissioners, "if we're having a problem with any new business coming into our area, then you need to bring them forward and let's talk about it." Well, you know, that never, that never happened. It just didn't happen. And it made me realize at that time that, that they were going forward with trying to, trying to make the county commissioners, trying to make them look pretty bad in everybody's eye because they were really concentrating on one thing and one thing only. They were concentrating on incorporation. That's where they were going with this issue, and they were going to use that as a stepping stone to incorporate. I think that, that, that now, as another month rolls by, after that column comes out, then they come out and say, "Well, we're bringing in hydroponics." And that was not too cute either. I mean, they, what was that? Properties were supposed to be used for public use only? Is that the idea? And they decided to put a business on that property?
Time.
And I don't know where that went to, but, but it affects the county, it affects the county commissioners. I, I support the county commissioners, as all of you know. And I, that's where I'm at with this issue. And so, and so it's kind of heartbreaking for me to have to come in here and, and go over this again because I've been here before on that issue, planning. But, and one other thing, and I'll get out of here, that has to do with the fire department and our, in our county rescue, fire and rescue. Hopefully, hopefully, that this fire department in the township is not impeding services anymore, having to do with fire and rescue, because I know they were doing that before. It was in the papers. If, if I'm wrong, then certainly I apologize. But thank you for having me here. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I address Mr. Alberti?
Yes.
Andy, Mr. Coonsy came in, spoke with me during the break, and the, what we, what I thought was a PTO or a Perump Town Ordinance that dictated the formation of a volunteer fire department. Brian actually looked that up for me, and he said that it was a Nye County ordinance that was adopted in the early sixties before the formation of the, the unincorporated town board form of government, elected town board form of government for the town of Perump. So I stand corrected. I thank you for bringing that to our attention. And we obviously have a little bit of cleanup to do in our own house. So I am, I expect to see a bill draft coming forward that will call for the abolishment of, or the elimination of that ordinance. So thank you for bringing that to our attention. Good job. Thank you.
Mr. Kohbarger?
Hi, William A. Kohbarger, K-O-H-B-A-R-G-E-R. First of all, I'd like to thank the county commission and the county staff for allowing us to use your building on the second, fourth Tuesdays of the, of every month. It is absolutely a great facility and we thank you very much.
It's our pleasure.
Liz in Rick's office is, just does us extremely well, and she needs to be pat on the back because she's come here and done some good stuff for us. I'd pat Rick on the back, but I can't reach that high. Second, there were some comments made here, obviously, you know, I'm just gonna address them real quick and then go sit down. We do not have a gangster union. It is made up of professionals. They have come to the table whenever we've asked. They have taken concession at this last budget session. They were very amenable to that. They were very professional. They've never got out of line. We have bumped heads, but geez, what management and union has never bumped heads? Please be step, step forward if a management and union's never stepped, never bumped heads. That's just life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness, but we do not have a gangster union here. We have a very good, professional, brand fire department, and asking for this community to have a volunteer fire department is absolutely ridiculous. It's like the sheriff's department having a total auxiliary unit would never happen. It's not safe and it's just not a good idea. Second of all, or third, if you're gonna vote on this, I'd ask that you just let it die right now, because again, thirty-nine signatures is just not enough to do anything. It's nice of you to, to hold this and allow the citizens to come and speak, and we greatly appreciate that. And again, thank you for your hospitality. That's all I have to say. If I have any questions.
I think Sheriff DeMayo wants to be recognized.
Yeah, in reference to Mr. Bill Kohbarger's mentioning about the sheriff's auxiliary, let me straighten the facts out. First of all, we cannot do our job without volunteers in the Nye County Sheriff's Office. We have well over fifty-five volunteers within this valley alone that service the people of Nye County, providing supplementary services. Let me say this. I come from New Jersey, the most, one of the most industrialized states in this country. The majority of the firefighters and any S-staff are volunteers. I used to train them back there, and they are dedicated. I don't see why we can't have a combination of both, but I would never come through the microphone. I, he has no business speaking to the sheriff's office and what we do. He doesn't have any idea what we do with, without, with those volunteers. And I take offense to that.
Well, Sheriff DeMayo, if I can defend Mr. Kohbarger a little, I believe what I heard him...
Really?
Yes, of course. I believe what I, I defend you all the time. I believe, it's a part-time job for me, Gary, defending you. I believe what I heard Mr. Kohbarger say was that it's not, it, it would not make any sense to have the Perump Fire Department be completely run by volunteers, nor would it make any sense for you to have your entire department run by an auxiliary volunteer force.
No, but these volunteers do supplement that. And for somebody to say anything negative, that volunteers wouldn't necessarily be a good fit. I mean, it...
Blessed are the peacemakers, Tony. I gave it my one good shot there.
I appreciate that, but like I said, we can have both.
Without a doubt, we can have both. And like two meetings ago, or three meetings ago, I actually sat up here and thanked the auxiliary for the sheriff's department and the wonderful job that they did here and that they do here. And I'm still gonna say thank you to them.
Thank you.
Harley Culkin, K-U-L-K-I-N. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but it's kind of hard for me to sit and listen and not to comment on it. I first would like to thank the people that support keeping the town board, because obviously they're paying attention to what's going on here. Incorporation seems to be a heavy topic here, but irrelevant, whatever kind of government the town of Perump would be run by. Those people are wanting incorporation, it's not gonna be stopped. They're still gonna do whatever they want to do. It's ridiculous. To get rid of a paid fire department over a volunteer overall, what do you think that's gonna do to your homeowner's insurance? Wake up. I hear talk about communication. Well, there is a problem with that, but on the other hand, as Senator Settlemeyer said when I addressed the Senate committee about the town of Perump taking over planning and zoning, he said, "What's the problem? You got three commissioners out of five." That's a good question, isn't it? So it isn't really a lack of communication. It's a lack of paying attention, I think. The planning department has run off tremendous amount of business, but it's not them doing it. They're following the rules that you put in place. No business should be run out of this town, and it's ridiculous of all the businesses and all the jobs we've lost. And that's your responsibility and you failed. I figure you've been collecting eleven million dollars a year for, I've been here seventeen years, that's a hundred and eighty-seven million dollars in pet money. Plus you got, what, fifty-five, sixty million that you got initially? Where's all that money? I quoted that you got about two million dollars that you've given to Perump, and I was corrected in the newspaper, apparently you've given us three million. Well, that's not even a dent on one year's eleven million. What's going on here is a really poorly-run business. You're a business, and you have failed the people of Nye County. And you have, and what I'm trying to do here is not throw stones. I'm trying to wake us all up. Yes, we do need to work together, and we need to accomplish something for the people of Nye County and Perump. And that's what's failed here, and it's time to fix it. And this kind of stuff here to get rid of the town board, talk about a major step backwards, that's not the answer. The answer is for us to work together and accomplish something for the people and stop being a failure. Thank you.
Go right ahead.
My name is Lorraine Murray, M-U-R-R-A-Y. I'm a resident of Perump. And I hate to, like, repeat everything that's already been said. I agree with Mr. Bob Hartman about the ballot question. And the reason for that is that all of you have been commissioners a significant amount of time. Every time you had thirty-nine people who brought up an issue and you immediately put it on the ballot, you could be putting something on the ballot every week. And I understand, Mr. Schinhoffen said that this was, you know, just a little morning thing, the old farts decided to do, and there you go. Is that the reason to motivate you to put it on the ballot? And I have heard all of you say multiple times, "Don't stand in the way of the people having their voice. Let them vote. That's a good thing." But are we gonna vote on every single thing that thirty-nine people in the county are unhappy with? If they say, "Well, I could get way more signatures than that." Good. Go do it. When you have eighteen hundred signatures, now we have an issue. We have something we can put on the ballot. That's what requires to put something on the ballot, like incorporation for those people who want to do that. Let these people come up with the same thing. Especially given the fact that the information of the petition that was signed was based on wrong facts anyway. Commissioner Eastley was able to kind of uncover some of those by asking questions of people who made statements and coming to the clarity. I was surprised you didn't tell a person that was concerned about their taxes that Perump's the only town that doesn't max their taxes.
They're way, way under...
We're way below.
Yeah.
Every other advisory board town...
Is at the max.
Is at their max, and we're not. So worry about your taxes...
But your assessed valuation is higher.
Is higher.
Yeah.
Because of our value. I mean, that's based on your value. If you have a house that's worth more, you have a higher assessment. But, but our percentage of taxes are actually the lowest in the county.
Yes.
Neither here nor there. I, I don't believe that this particular petition, and just looking at the numbers even from tonight, from the few people that did turn out, that it raises to the level of having a ballot question. But I understand if you put it on the ballot, so be it. I don't believe that it would be something that people with the correct information would vote to disband the town board. They do serve a purpose. It isn't a duplication of services. We don't do roads, you do. We do parks. You don't. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Department. Yes.
I just wanted to address one thing. When this question was brought before the Board of Commissioners, I was one of the people who voted yes. Now, I can't answer why the rest of the commissioners voted to hear this in a public hearing, but I had been meeting several times with Dr. Walters, also with Carolyn, and many times I had been told that we needed clearer communication and more opportunity for the town and the county to talk together. Because of those conversations I had had with your recently, recently seated town board members, I voted to put this on a special meeting and hear it so that we can do just exactly what we're doing. We have the town in front of us. We're here. We're hearing a public meeting, and that's what I wanted to come out of this. So since it's been brought up several times, I wanted to explain my vote for having this special meeting.
Mr. Chairman, if I can give the other side of that.
Yes.
I think I was the only one who voted against having this public hearing, and my opinion on this hasn't changed. There are some of you, and I know Andy Alberti will understand this comment, this is not a democracy. We live in a representative republic. And that, if you live in a democracy, that means that you vote on every single issue that, that would come before you, this one included. Thirty-nine signatures on a petition, some, and the signatures of some of those people, those folks don't even live here. Thirty-nine signatures on a petition is not my definition of mandate. That's not in, that is not a definition in my dictionary. Dan, I understand that you may have had twenty others contact you in, in support of this issue. That makes fifty-nine. Fifty-nine out of forty-eight thousand still is not a mandate in my dictionary. In November of 2010, the voters decisively ousted three members that they believed were not representing their interests and replaced them with three that they believed would represent their interest. That is a representative republic. That is what we live under. Perump, Perump is too big and too important not to have an elected town board. These people were elected in November. They took their seats in January, and we need to give them a chance to govern. Self-governance is important. Let me tell you, you would not be happy having an advisory board form of government and having these five people up here making all of your decisions for you, because advisory boards have no authority to do anything. Let's make that really clear. Be careful what you wish for when some of you are asking for the town board to be abolished and for that board to be replaced by an advisory board. They have no authority. None. And if you think you don't like what's happening now, you wait until we're making your decisions for you. So... And with that, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we take no action on this issue.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Commissioner...
I have a motion by Commissioner Eastly to take no action on this matter, second by Commissioner Wickman.
Mr. Chairman.
Further discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Shinoffen.
Thank you. Really, I agree with a lot of what you said. I agreed a lot of what you said before we made the motion to have this hearing, which was to let the people speak. Let them, let them try to fully understand what the idea was, what the motion was, or the petition was. We are representative republic. The reason we aren't a democracy is so that mob doesn't rule. So, yes, there were only thirty-nine people who signed it, but that was just about everybody, I guess, who was there. They have, they have an opportunity like anybody else here to bring something forward under public petitioners, which I believe that's where it came. It might have been under, so, so anybody, I mean, if we're talking about the numbers of people who actually signed it, if that's the criteria for whether we're going to allow something to be on the ballot or not, what I have here is, you know, for and against the people that did choose to stand up and speak, pretty close. I don't have a problem here with, with putting it on the ballot. If it goes on the ballot, it'd be in 2012. It's not shorting the board currently sitting. The board's going to fill out their terms, and they're going to show us in that time that they're really different from the previous boards, that they're really going to communicate with us, as we've tried with them. In the past few weeks or few months, I haven't seen anybody on this board badmouth any of the town board members. We have been at a few meetings where we've had, we are constantly told that we're not stepping up, we're not doing our job. By the other side, we're happy, very, let me finish, please. They're very, very happy to work with them. I'm very happy to work with the town board. I don't know what this hurts by having, being on the, being on the ballot. I just don't see why, just the people here in this room, if they voted, why, why don't, why didn't everybody get to vote on it? This board was created by a vote, wasn't it? Is that why we have to do it? And we have no authority as a county commission to dissolve this board. I have no desire to dissolve this board with a vote of five people. I want everybody living in the valley to vote on dissolving this board or not. And if that's what they choose to do, that's fine. And if they don't want it, and they will keep it, it's all the same to me either way. It's all the same to me either way, but not to move it forward, I'm not for that. I think we should have a vote on it. And again, it's in 2012. The other question was, what about the two people who would be elected at that time? Well, they, if they were disbanded, they would serve as an advisory board. I also kind of take exception to, if you, if you don't like the way it is now, wait till we have your, you know, we make decisions for you.
I meant to-
I represent District Five first. I, I am a represent, I believe in a representative republic. I represent, I believe in the republic, and therefore, I don't represent the county commission to you. I represent you to the county commission. I believe that's true of at least the other two who live here in Perump. So, you are represented, and you'll continue to be represented either way, whether you have an elected town board, who has a paid county manager, who has a paid comptroller. A lot of money could be saved, you'd have the same services. I mean, at the end of the day, I don't know what difference you'd, what difference you'd see. But if the people have a chance to vote on it, and they want to keep the board, it's good with me. If the people have a chance to vote on it, and they don't want to keep the elected board, it's good with me, too. But I think the people should have a chance to vote on it.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
May I rebut that comment?
Absolutely.
Commissioner Shinoffen, if you want to put this on the ballot in 2012 so that we have an opportunity to see whether those people who were elected by everyone out here in this audience can prove themselves, then let's call this what it is. This isn't the will of the people, this is a threat. And let's call it what it is. It's a threat. Number one. And you are, you are absolutely right when you say that anybody who sits out there has a, has a right to sign a petition like this. Yes, they have the right, but you have the obligation, and so do I, to make the right decision on behalf of those people, because we represent them. I'm going to say to you again, thirty-nine signatures, some of whom do not even live in this valley, is not a mandate. Let them govern themselves. They're having problems. Give the town board members an opportunity to work this out. There's a man sitting out there tonight, Harley Culkin. Mr. Culkin was just elected. We agree on a lot of things. There are some things that we don't agree on. Do I believe that he should be removed and not given a chance to help move this town forward? Absolutely not. Absolutely not. The people elected him, and the people should be allowed to keep him in office so that he can see out his term.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm done.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the people would have a chance to keep him in office, and the people, and he will fill out his term. Either way, even if the board's dissolved, he'd still fill on it. This has nothing to do with individual people. I voted for Harley.
I'm sorry, I have a motion and a second on the floor.
I voted for Harley, so I, you know, it's just, that's nothing to do with individual personalities. To me, it was just a matter of, of putting it up for a vote.
The hearing is closed.
Putting it up for a vote, and that was it. So, we have a motion and a second. Call for the question.
No, wait a minute. I haven't had my two cents in here yet.
I rescind that.
Thank you.
Excuse me one minute. The last meeting that I was here, I was shot down by one board member, and that was a hospital board.
Point of order. There is a motion and a second already on the floor.
Gary.
The discussion-
I've supported you and Ed Bishop as long as I've been in this town, but you want to know something? You better get some unity into both parties, and you'd better get some unity behind me here. Unity is it, and you people need to work together and quit your fighting and garbing an expertise of one subject.
I have to do it by the rules. There's a motion on the floor, and there's a second discussion with the, with the board. Mr. Borowski.
Thank you. I hear a lot of discussion about working together, but saying it and trying to do it are two different things. I've been trying to work with the last three boards, not just this one, and it doesn't seem to go too far, although I would say that I'm having better success right now. I did talk to Mr. Coonsy, and I can only talk to two board members about any one particular potential agenda item coming up, but that doesn't stop me from talking to the other ones. So, I put the gauntlet down, I gave them your my phone numbers, you have my email address, and I am here to work with you. I've said that all along. But, you know, to keep blaming the county for everything that goes wrong, you need to look in the mirror once in a while and say, "Did I do everything I could? Did I come to the commissioners and try to work with them on issues, planning, zoning, and others?" And you've all, everyone here has had their say when we've had planning, planning and zoning issues and matters. If you think you can do it better, show me your plan. I'd love to sit down and talk with you about it, and let's see if we can do something about it. And I'm not here to beat up the town board or anybody else. Communication is most important. I've been stressing that for a long time, and some of the people I used to be able to talk with don't want to talk to me anymore. So, I can't force them to do anything they don't want to do. I'm here, you all have my phone number. All you have to do is go on a county website if you don't, and if you don't want to call me, you don't have to. But I've offered many, many times, so I'm done.
The chairman asked me if I would withdraw my motion to take no action so that he could reopen the public hearing in case there are any folks who have something else they want to say. So, I will withdraw my motion, but I'm going to make it again.
I will withdraw my second.
Okay. Where do you go?
I think he left.
Okay, go ahead.
Dean Brooks.
The public hearing is now open. Go ahead. Mr. Alberti?
You've already spoken.
You know you can only speak. You've been around long enough.
Well, you said it was open again, so I figured-
I'm opening it again for people that haven't, haven't spoke. Go ahead, sir.
Okay, Dean Brooks, B-R-O-O-K-S. I haven't been in town long. I bought property here in 2000, and I, just recently, when Obama ran for office, decided to try to get involved a little bit and see what I could do.
Ooh, there's a story there.
Yeah, it's pretty scary what we've got in Washington, D.C. right now. I want to congratulate you, Ms. Eastly, on your commenting about this being a republic, a representative republic, constitutional republic. There's too many people that do the soundbites on TV and talk about democracy all the time. The Constitution forbids democracy. We are absolutely guaranteed the right for Republican form of government throughout all of our states and counties and towns. And we need to make that a big issue in the coming days to make sure people start to understand we are not a democracy.
Right.
Democracy's mob rule. And I've taken it upon myself to try to distribute as many of these little books, it's called the Citizen's Rulebook, to distribute as many as I can in town. I just got an order of six hundred in, and I got about half of them gone now. And, thank you. We-
I never leave home without it, my American Express card, and my lipstick.
Sounds like you're prepared. Good Girl Scout. I, I just really, I want to keep the town board. I was ambivalent when I came tonight, but I think we need to keep the town board.
Yes.
I voted for three of them on there. I've kidded them a lot about being Democrats. I still kid them, and still will, until they change their spots. But I really think that, they talked about cooperation between the two boards. I think that's absolutely excellent. I think that, I've avoided government, I've avoided the judicial system, I've avoided the police most of my life, because I didn't like what I saw going on. But I'm going to start trying to get more involved and talk to people more, because I think there's a lot of injustice. I witnessed something the other day when we went to-
People died so you could do that.
Pardon?
People died so you could do that.
Yes. And quite frankly, I'm, I'm willing to put my life on the line right now to preserve this, this country. I think, I think our country is probably close to being over. We don't have much time, another year or two, to clean things up. But I think on a local level here, we need to get very, very patriotic and start educating people. The average person on the street out there just doesn't know what's in this little book.
Right.
It's appalling. And there's a man by the name of Phil Hyder. If you ever want him to speak to your group or anything, he's got a CD out, or a DVD. This man is, he's a immigrant from England. He knows the Constitution inside out, so he'd be a great guy to invite.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Katrine Romanoff, R-O-M-A-N-O-F-F. I wasn't going to make any comment until you opened it again, and I think that Shinoffen was about to say that this room really was against the town board, and, but we didn't stand up, and you couldn't see how many of us, there's a big silent majority here that don't speak one way or another. Government works better when it's closer to the people.
Absolutely right.
Absolutely. And the words in this agenda talk about a town board that serves the people. We were angry, a lot of us people were angry with the last town board. They seemingly did not listen to the people, didn't make any difference how many of us spoke, but they went right ahead and voted the other way. And that happened so many times, it was just astounding. And I also was going to say something about the petition. Thirty-nine people. I do agree with you very highly. Thirty-nine people. Who do they think they are? Doesn't anybody know that you have to get a number, lots of names on petitions in order to make things happen? So, thank you for saying what you did, Ms. Eastly. I don't agree with the petition, and I was looking forward to the new board, which seemed to be really listening to the people, and I just, I look forward to them continuing to do that. We, the people, yes. Thank you.
Mrs. Romanoff, I want to add something to what you said. We really don't want to diminish the interest or the efforts of those thirty-nine people. They have a right to be heard, but we have an obligation, we have an obligation to put that in some kind of context, too. Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, real briefly, I, if I could address Ms. Romanoff, I wasn't going to say-
Why don't you, why don't you wait for your comment, and let's hear what the people say.
All right.
Go right ahead.
Hi. Donna Cox, resident of Perump, on and off for twenty-two years. I don't know how many of you know this, but I go back to Clark County in East Las Vegas, which Charlie Boy, Mr. Charlie Boy brought to your attention, along with Paul Willis. I grew up with Paul Willis, and in fact, built a house right across the street from his parents. I was on that cantankerous town board in East Las Vegas for over twelve years. I was vice chairman, only because I didn't want to be chairman. But let me tell you, we cost the county a lot of money. You probably don't want to have a town advisory board. We were only a town advisory board, but the county had to take care of us. At this point, you're not having to take care of the town board. I spent millions of dollars through that county, because I was adamant that the citizens were going to get their money's worth, and the county ended up putting in new roads, and curbs, and gutters, and streetlights, and a senior center, and a park, and community center, and on and on. We were always asking for something, and we got our share, because if not, then the county had to be elected by us and the county commissioners. And so, we kind of had their feet to the fire. So, at this point, I think I would like to see this thing ride out for about another six months, and maybe come back and make a decision. And I'll tell you why. Just like Ms. Eastly said, we have a new town board, and I'd like to see how they're going to pan out. Our problem is not with the town board members. Our problem is with the management and the attorneys, and we're working on that right now. And the new town board is working on that. So, I'd like to see that come about and see how that works out. Maybe six months down the road, if we don't get things straightened out, it might be a good idea. Right now, I can't see spending all this money for an election that we may not need. I know there's an incorporation issue, one way or the other. I support incorporation, because I know it can work. I just don't know if it can work right now under the economic problems we're having in the state of Nevada. That's something else for on down the road, too. Fire department? We had a fire department in East Las Vegas. We had our own fire department, even though we fell under county rule. It didn't affect the fire department one way or the other. We still had to pay for a fire department, even though we belonged to Clark County. And all the trucks there, say, East Las Vegas, or Town of Paradise, or Town of Winchester. Oh, and by the way, those were never town boards there. They were always town advisory boards. We didn't have any town boards. And to this day, they don't have town boards. We attempted to incorporate, because we were not happy with some of the things that happened in the county, and we did get incorporated, and then that kind of fell through, because it went to the Supreme Court, and they overruled it, and we didn't get to pursue it on at the point, because I moved out here. So, it kind of fell by the wayside when I moved out here, because I was the main pusher behind a lot of that. But at this point, I don't see any sense in even talking about an election right now.
Three minutes.
Give us six months, and let's see what we can do. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna.
Good evening. My name is Lynn Jones, J-O-N-E-S. That's a tough one. In any event, first of all, thank you, Joanie Eastly, for your support of the republic.
I get emails from you, don't I?
Yes, you do.
Okay.
We're in the survival mode. In any event, thank you, Joanie, for your support of the republic. That's what we are. I think our town, the size that it is, also does need its own form of government. If for no other reason, it helps give a check and balance between the town board, the commissioners, and all the decisions that are actually made within Nye County. The second thing I'd like to ask, very briefly, because I'm not going to reiterate everything that's already been said, I'm with the understand that League of Women Voters has a meeting coming up between the commissioners and the town board, and maybe you could introduce that to the public. They might want to attend. I am in favor of keeping the town board.
Good.
Thank you.
Good. When is that scheduled, Rick?
April eighteenth.
April eighteenth. Same bat time, same bat shadow.
Anyone else?
Right here.
I'll close the public hearing for the second time. Mr. Shinoffen.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
No, be honest.
I just like to answer one thing that Ms. Romanoff said, something relating to that. I was going to say something about the makeup of the room, more for or against. I haven't, I wasn't, I wasn't saying that. But I do want to get to the point of, I don't have a problem with the town board. And I don't know what the problem is with thirty-nine signatures, fifty-nine signatures, or a hundred and fifty-nine signatures, or whatever number you deem right. As a republic, a republic's there to protect the minority. The minority wanted to bring this forward. I had no problem with that. I still have no problem with letting everybody who's not in this room vote on it. That's a republic, too, you know? I am, I am all about the republic. I'm not for mob rule. But, and now, that was my only point, really. Just let everybody vote on it. I'd like, what- I'd like, what Ms. Cox says even better. We don't have to decide tonight. We can wait six months. We can wait next year. We can never do it.
So, what do we...
Whatever, but this group asked to have it brought forward. We brought it forward. We all got to hear what everybody has said, and up until tonight, I had nobody in my district tell me not to move forward with this. Now, there's a few people who live in my district who have come forward and said that they don't want to vote on it. Still, I've had a lot more tell me to vote on it.
So, if we're here to protect the minority, what are we protecting them from in this case?
I didn't...
Yeah, you did say. Yeah, you said we're...
To protect, to let their voices be heard, and they wanted to have their voices heard and ask to have this on the ballot.
All right.
That's all.
I'm going to say something here. I'm firm believer in public hearings. That's a chance for me to hear you, and that's a reason for me to make and base my decisions on. So, the reason why I voted to have this public hearing is to hear it from the public. So... Board.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we take no action on this item.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Eastly to take no action on this item. I have a second by Commissioner Wickman. Further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. There's one other thing I want to mention. It's called this little book here called the Nevada Revive Statutes. I really wish the town board would look at 269 that deals with unincorporated towns. That tells you what authority you have and what you can do. And again, I still say that I'll sit down and work with anybody who wants to sit down and work with me. You can sit out there and laugh all you want, you know. I keep offering, you keep rejecting, so the voters should know that, and it's up to you to put the pressure on both boards to work together. Thank you.
Okay. All for the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Lorinda.
No.
All opposed?
No.
Pass is four one. Evidently, we have no closed sections because there is no attorney. We go to item five, general public comment, three-minute time limit per person. Action will not be taken on matters considered during this period until specifically included on agenda items. Is there any public comment? Thank you.
General public comment.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I have one comment I wanted to make that I came up to before. You're a little too fast for me on the gavel.
Make your comment.
I wanted to address this to Joni Eastly's comments about thirty-some-odd people signing the petition. If you go back in the history of Nye County, when the township of Johnny was formed, ten-thousand people lived there, and forty people signed a petition to create the Township of Johnny. It isn't necessarily that somebody has to go out every time and get that many signatures to be heard.
Excuse me. Let's have quiet. We still have public comment. Okay, Andy, go ahead.
Forty. As a matter of fact, I have to thank our clerk for allowing me access to the books a couple of years ago, which is where I've read that, and I actually have copies of the document. And I also think that the issue is not that we're unhappy with the commission, with the town board as much as we're unhappy with the things the way they are. Now, to say that a town board needs to be dissolved isn't to say there isn't some other mechanism that couldn't be put into place that would work better. So, the question becomes, is there a better mechanism than the one we're working with because the one we have doesn't seem to work too well? And the reason some of the people were unelected at the town board is because they did not follow the town board, the Town of Perump's people, so...
Andy?
Yeah.
This is general public comment.
For items that are not on the agenda.
That's not on the agenda. You're talking about something that was already...
Oh, okay. Well, I just hope to respond to that.
That was interesting. Only forty out of ten thousand.
Forty out of ten thousand.
Only forty out of ten thousand.
When is that, 1906 or 1910?
Okay, young lady.
Sisan. Okay, my name is Robin Lloyd, L-L-O-Y-D, and I love the comments that were made about the Constitution, and I would just like to mention one more thing the Constitution says. It says that the American flag is to be red, white, and blue only. And I can't see from here, but I've been curious every time I come, is there a gold fringe on the bottom of that?
No.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Now, I don't feel bad saluting it, okay? I've always wondered that. I can't stand going into a court of law and seeing that.
A flag with a beard.
Excuse me?
A flag with a beard.
Yeah, well, that's not the only thing. I mean, look into what it means, what it actually means when it has gold fringe on it, and it's scary, and I don't think it has any place anywhere in this country, and I think we should stand up against that. So, I appreciate that there's no gold fringe on that flag. Thank you.
Thank you. I agree with you.
Yes, sir.
My name is John Bosta, and I've sit here and I've listened to people comment about the thirty-nine people that signed that petition. That petition, let me finish.
You can't talk about, you're talking about agenda items that's on the agenda.
Okay.
This is public comment for what's not on the agenda.
Can I request that my name be removed?
Sure. I think it's a moot point, John, because we're not taking any action on it anyway. It's going in the shredder.
Well, I'm offended by the people that brought it forward because they brought forward something that was not proper.
Okay.
Although it says very clearly at the top, "To dissolve the Town of Perump and the town board and to replace it with the Citizens Advisory Board." It says it right at the top, and I highlighted your signature.
Okay.
So...
Mr. Culkin.
Harley Culkin. One of the things that I think that you should take a look at is the consolidated tax distributions. I'm looking at it right here, and it looks like the county brings in around $10 million a year and distributes about $1,581,000. To show how this works here, Perump gets $621,363 a year. That equates to $18.69 per capita. And when we compare us to Beatty, Beatty with, and that's with us looking at having about 33,000 people. Beatty says here has about 1,000 people, and they get $314,000, about half of what we're getting. Round Mountain gets, with 744 people, gets 209,000, and I probably wouldn't have enough time to read all this, but obviously, something's wrong here. We're getting a tremendously disproportionate amount of our tax dollars back in Perump, and we generate most of it. We became, we changed from an importer of sales tax to taking what we get when we started having all these car lots here bringing in a lot of sales tax. I'm told that this is set by the state.
Yes.
This obviously needs to be something that this board should take action and get this corrected because the Town of Perump is getting extremely short-changed, and this is one of the things that I'm sure you're aware of, and this is what I'm talking about. It's not necessarily a matter of a lack of communication. It's about seeing what's going on and taking action, so...
Harley, I guess, Mr. Chairman, may I address? I guess if the Town of Perump has a problem with that, then you certainly have the authority to approach, I would have told you Dino DiCiano, but I understand that the governor announced his retirement the other morning, so whoever his replacement is, I would suggest that the town board can take action on that themselves. You don't need us to help you with that. You can approach the Department of Taxation on your own and ask them what the formula is for the distribution of that consolidated tax, and they'd be happy to share that with you.
But that isn't us doing it.
No, it's not us. It's the Department of Taxation.
Well, I will take that action and put it on our town board agenda. I was just figuring that the Nye County Commission would have a little more juice in getting this accomplished.
Remember, Harley, the state of Nevada is Dillon's law, not Home Rule. So, eighty-nine percent of the decisions made in this county are made elsewhere than here.
No, I understand it, but I'm sure you're aware that this isn't right, so... I'd imagine that whatever was put in place was put in decades and decades ago before the population shift happened here.
Well, yeah, and if there's an error in the calculation, it would be a good idea. It's incumbent upon you to represent the people who elected you and contact the Department of Taxation and get it straightened out.
I will proceed.
And some of them in good heart can steer you in the right direction.
No, they have a website, just...
More public comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi. My name is Patty Patterson, and since I was here and you guys had this open comment, I want, because I never make it to your commission meetings. I just want on the record that I'm totally against this Groponics deal, and I hope to God you guys do not take away our fair, you know, the right to have that as a public park. I live in that area.
That's what I was going to ask.
There's no way I want that.
Patty, the district attorney has some really strong opinions on that, some strong legal opinions on that.
Yes. That's what I've heard, and I just want to make sure that you guys don't go changing your mind on the legal opinion.
Patty, would you see me? You live near there. You're in my district. I'd love to talk to you.
Oh, do you? Okay.
If you live near, you're in my district.
David?
I'm in your district.
Just one quick comment here.
Yes, David.
Huh?
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
You're more than welcome, sir.
Well, thank you. Thank you so much.
He's going to get us straightened out now.
One thing I've heard here that really touched me, that's what Butch said, is for